America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Jimmy, if you take the role.
Iker.
Here.
Forsterling.
Here.
Hartwig.
Here.
Henigan. Jaime.
Here.
Patrice. Yusuf Abersen.
Here.
All right, so we are going to start with our favorite part of the meeting. We are going to do our 207's best. This month, it is for academic achievement. And so this is our first round for the academic year. So if it's okay, let's go ahead and start with Maine West, Dr. McMahon.
Sure, I'd like to introduce Aiden Vega. So I have so much to share, but if I share nothing else about Aiden tonight to illustrate why he's 207's best, and to keep going back to what he's shared with me three or four different times in three or four different ways when we met, he kept saying he doesn't like things to be easy. And he knows that having to struggle sometimes is good for him. So he seeks out that experience because he finds it more satisfying to work through hard things than do everything easily. Even more satisfying is working through difficulty with friends and teammates. So if you know those two things about Aiden, you get a glimpse into what an accomplished, dedicated, loving young man he is and why he's such a credit to our school. Aiden told me he takes the hardest classes he can without overloading, and then he makes sure he is organized and disciplined enough to succeed in them. "I go in thinking I can do it," he said. "I'm not so smart that I don't have to try. I don't know everything beforehand, but I do know I can do it if I put in the work." Which is why his transcript, which is loaded with the hardest classes we have, is flawless. And his list of activities and contributions is longer than we have time for me to highlight tonight. He sets himself up to do hard things, and then he does them and does them well. So math team, volleyball, golf, DECA, student voice committee, link crew, all of the honor societies, including NHS, of which he's the VP, all of the APs, virtual volunteering and advocate for a few hours a week, calling older patients who need someone to talk to. Aiden makes time to contribute across multiple lanes of the school and beyond it. It's important to emphasize how much Aiden values his experiences more than his accolades, however. He took up golf this summer and got hooked because he wasn't good at it right away. "I love that it's hard. I haven't had to struggle in sports, so it's good for me to struggle. I love that it teaches me responsibility. If you make a mistake on the golf course, it's yours. You have to own it." Very true. He also told me that one of his most cherished memories of his experience on the volleyball team was the loss they took in regionals last spring, when their expectations were higher. Losing is the most important experience in a sport. Wins are amazing, but losing is more important. He will always remember teammates crying on his shoulder. When you cry together, you don't forget it. He assures me that the team is locked in for this year, because I don't think he preferred losing. He just made it better. And he said he loves the open gyms at 4:45 a.m., loves them, because they all show up to be on this mission together. "I don't like coasting," Aiden said, and I just wonder how he would know, because I see no evidence at all that he ever has. Naturally, these qualities endear Aiden to all of his teachers, coaches, and sponsors, who highlight his selfless and generous nature in addition to his dedication. His freshman health and wellness teacher and golf coach, Ms. Kelly Voight, said, "Aiden's the kid who always shows up ready to go, no matter what. He has a great attitude and wants to learn more and improve constantly. He is the quiet leader who leads by example. I can't wait for what more is to come during our golf season and senior year." Ms. Garrity Rourdinos remembers Aiden making a difference for other students in Key Club. "I remember when a student was discussing how hard a class was for them, Aiden offered some great advice. When I'm struggling in a class, I ask the teacher for help. I also remind myself I am learning something new." Ms. Bezak remembers Aiden's growth mindset in math. In addition to being highly intelligent, Aiden is the epitome of an independent learner. Many students ask me for help as soon as they start to struggle with a problem. Aiden remains resilient and uses his resources to find solutions. He also demonstrates patience, empathy, and respect while working with his classmates to solve problems. Many college-bound students meet the academic and intellectual expectations, but Aiden also has the resilience, work ethic, and interpersonal skills needed to succeed. In addition to the time and effort he puts into his coursework, Aiden spends a significant amount of his own time preparing for the SAT and ACT. He came in during office hours a few times to discuss specific problems and the mathematical concepts from which they came. He truly represents the best of West as a student and as a person. Ms. Michaels, who taught Aiden in Math III Compression last year, enthusiastically wrote to highlight how important he was to their learning community. "Aiden was a standout student in the most positive sense. His insightful contributions made our class discussions fun and enriched the experience of the entire class. His ability to explain complex concepts to his peers was remarkable, and in fact, other students often requested to be in a group with Aiden due to his exceptional skill in clarifying the process and reasoning behind the concepts. His natural curiosity and teaching ability, combined with his humility, personable nature, and enthusiasm, made Aiden an invaluable asset to our class." Ms. Reddick also raved about Aiden's capacity to manage his heavy load. "Aiden is such a fantastic, thoughtful, conscientious, and super-bright student. He was in my AP Psychology class last year, and he was a pleasure to have in class. He asked insightful questions and was always earnest and committed about keeping up with his work, despite his busy schedule with volleyball and a difficult academic load. I'm very glad he's being recognized. He's such a standout kid." Aiden expressed gratitude for the support and encouragement that he's always received from his parents and from his sister, whom he told me was "more help than you think." We are grateful, too, for sharing Aiden with us so that he could bring such great things to our school. Congratulations, Aiden, and thank you for being Maine West's 207's best. Aiden, hold on one second. Can you share with us who's here with you tonight?
This is my mom and my dad.
Great. And do you have plans for next year yet?
No, I'm applying to a bunch of schools, and they're all due in November and January. I'm in the middle of the application process.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Aiden, what do you want to study?
It's so exciting seeing you here.
Do you know what you want to study?
Biochemistry.
Congratulations.
He definitely gets it from his mom, not his dad.
Congratulations, Aiden. Let's go ahead and move to Maine South, Dr. Barbara Cuddy.
Absolutely. Elle, you want to come up here? It is my absolute pleasure to introduce you to Elle Cho for District 207's Best Academic Excellence Recognition. So I had the privilege of sitting down with Elle and her counselor, Ms. Moret, who's here tonight. We were in my office, and we ordered Portillo's. We had burgers, fries, the whole spread, and it was the perfect setting to hear Elle reflect on her journey. There's something about eating food and talking about serious conversations and making it feel lighter. And Elle's combination of calm, humility, and insight made that hour fly by really quickly. So what drives academic excellence at this level? For Elle, it all comes down to discipline and time management. When I asked her about her secret, she said she wakes up at 5:30 a.m. every single day to practice violin before school. By the time many of us are still staring at the coffee pot, Elle has already completed an hour of focused practice. Later in the day, she logs another four hours, all while balancing AP coursework, studying for exams, and just for good measure, college applications. It's almost as if she's figured out how to add a 25th hour to the day. But her journey hasn't been just about routines and calendars. Elle spoke with genuine appreciation for the teachers who opened doors for her. Whether it was her math teacher, whose confidence inspired her to aim higher, or her AP World History teacher who met her before and after school to help her push through early struggles, those experiences not only boosted her academic performance, but also ignited a love of history and social science that continues to this day. When I asked how she keeps going on through the tough days, Elle explains that she thinks about her future self and what she might regret if she gave into a slump. That ability to zoom out and see the long-term picture is impressive at any age, but especially remarkable for a high school student. She also credited her friends for helping her stay motivated, describing how a supportive group in the library can make hard work feel less like a burden and more like a shared journey. And perhaps the most human moment of our conversation came when I asked what she'd tell her freshman self. Despite all the accolades and accomplishments, Elle's advice was simple. "Just have more fun," is what she said. It's a reminder that true excellence isn't just about achievement. It's about balance, perception, and joy. Elle is an extraordinary student whose brilliance, perseverance, and grounded wisdom make her a shining example of District 207's commitment to academic excellence. And the following remarks from staff members help showcase these qualities. Ms. Moret, as I stated, who's here tonight, said, "I am proud to share a few remarks about Elle, a senior at Maine South who exemplifies academic excellence. By graduation, she will have completed 14 AP courses, three dual-credit classes, and an internship program. Alongside her achievements, she dedicates herself to a rigorous violin practice schedule, balancing it with grace and determination. Elle's success highlights the power of both discipline and passion." Ms. Gabrielle Little, her World Language teacher, shares, "Elle is the kind of student any teacher would be lucky to have: kind, talented, and studious. In the two years of high-level French, I've seen her determination, grace, and quiet humor shine as she developed strong language skills and overcame challenges with poise. I am proud of her hard work and confident her future will be bright." Social science teacher Ms. Rachel Santucci adds, "Elle is always polite and kind, contributing thoughtful ideas and supporting her peers. Her quiet strength and steady presence helped create a welcoming environment for all students." Ms. Barbara Gianosa, a math teacher, comments, "Elle is a hard-working, conscientious, and driven student. In AP Calculus BC, she approached challenges with pride, contributed thoughtfully to class discussions, and supported her classmates with patience and clarity. Her responsibility, motivation, and leadership left a lasting impression on both peers and me." And lastly, Kendra Halloran, her chemistry teacher, adds, "I taught Elle accelerated chemistry as a freshman and again in AP Chemistry as a senior. She is motivated, hardworking, and holds herself to a standard of excellence that inspires her peers. This recognition is well-deserved." Elle shines as a remarkable example of what it means to embody academic excellence at Maine South. She has challenged herself with some of the most rigorous AP courses, ranging from AP World, AP Econ, to Bio, AP US, AP Government and Politics, while excelling in her first love, mathematics, and discovering a passion for the social sciences. At the same time, Elle's dedication to the violin is nothing short of extraordinary, with daily practice routines that rival professional musicians, often totaling five hours a day. What sets Elle apart is not only her brilliance, but also her perseverance. She turned early challenges into AP World and Economics. She turned early challenges in AP World and Economics into opportunities for growth, developing study skills, and resilience that now define her success. Inspired by teachers who believed in her and motivated by peers who share her drive, Elle has built a foundation of discipline, balance, and vision that will carry her far beyond high school. With dreams of pursuing both music performance and pre-law, Elle is a shining life of talent, determination, and joy, and a true reflection of District 207's best. Congratulations, Elle. Elle, tell us who's here with the crowd tonight.
I have my mom and my dad here.
Hi, Mom and Dad. And I know I already said this in my statement, but do you want to restate what are your goals after high school and what are you looking into?
Yeah, I plan to pursue probably a double major with both violin performance and either economics or applied mathematics.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Congratulations, Elle. All right, and last but certainly not least, Maine East, Dr. Pickel.
Thank you, Tareem. You can come on up.
All right, it is with much pride that we celebrate Tareem tonight as our recipient of 207's Best Award for September in the area of Academic Achievement. Tareem embodies the qualities of a dedicated, well-rounded scholar who constantly strives to push herself to new limits. Tareem described to me that her motivation is her desire to always push herself to the limit. She views her strong grades not only as proof of her success, but also as evidence of her ability to exceed expectations. As a key part of Tareem's journey has been the unwavering support of her family and friends, she aspires to be a positive role model for her brothers by demonstrating the value of hard work, balance, and perseverance. Tareem's academic strengths shine in her favorite subjects, math, science, and technology. She has extended those passions into meaningful extracurricular pursuits. Tareem co-leads our astronomy club, participates in Rotary Interact, Skills USA, the National Honor Society, and she's engaged in a great leadership opportunity, the Girl Con Conference in Chicago, where she served on the planning team to encourage female leadership in technology. While Tareem is incredibly humble, probably the most humble student I've ever spoken with, in describing her academic achievements, it's important to note that she currently holds the highest GPA in the class of 2026 and earned a near-perfect ACT score. Her interests extend beyond the classroom. Tareem is a committed student of karate, enjoys reading and creative writing, and is passionate about baking. She dreams of pursuing engineering, possibly in the field of electrical engineering, but she also has a creative vision for one day opening a cozy café, as she describes it, combining her love of baking with her appreciation for tea, reading, and writing. When asked what she attributes her success to, Tareem emphasizes the importance of choosing classes that spark her interest, maintaining balance, and staying motivated by her personal goals. She sets aside time for academics while also making time for family and friends, a balance she believes is key to her long-term success. Her advice to younger students is to find something that motivates you, whether it be your friends, good grades, or a personal goal. That motivation will help you stay focused and achieve success. Our staff at Maine East were very eager to share their feedback about their positive experiences with Tareem as a student. Her physics teacher shared with us that she's a model student who always comes prepared to class, she engages enthusiastically and patiently provides support to group members who need it. Physics did not always come easy, but she worked hard to make sure she understood everything well. She was never hesitant to contribute to a class conversation and, as a result, helped elevate the experience for everyone. Mrs. Danny Mate, a Spanish teacher, also had a great experience with Tareem. She is a wonderful student who always came to class with a positive attitude. She was willing to work with others and be a great conversation partner in Spanish. Her quiet confidence and her welcoming presence helped her form great bonds with her classmates and helped her achieve immense success in Spanish I and II. Her persistence and commitment to language learning helped her to earn top marks on her assignments and helped her to flourish into a great writer and speaker of Spanish. I was truly lucky to have her in class for two years. Mr. Mark Dobner, a calculus teacher, shared that Tareem's an absolute pleasure to have in class. She's a bright, hard-working young lady who's challenged herself by taking the most rigorous classes that fit in her schedule. She's undoubtedly one of our strongest students and is an active participant in our classes, which enriches the learning environment. Tareem's pride in her work and commitment to excellence are clearly apparent and very much greatly appreciated. I'm impressed with Tareem's kind demeanor, her positive attitude, her maturity, and eagerness to help others. She truly deserves to be recognized as one of 207's best. Lastly, Ms. Angie Edsie, counselor, shared that Tareem is an exceptionally talented and motivated student who consistently challenges herself by enrolling in rigorous courses each year. She's respectful, responsible, and poised with a very positive outlook on life. Tareem manages the stresses of adolescence with balance and maturity and actively seeks opportunities that broaden and enrich her education. For example, with the goal of becoming potentially a software developer, she has enrolled in a technology capstone class to further explore and strengthen her interest in the field. Tareem's academic record, leadership, and personal character make her an outstanding representative of what the 207's Best Award celebrates. We are honored to recognize her accomplishments and look forward to the many contributions you will make in the future, Tareem. Congratulations.
All right, Tareem, who's here with you tonight?
My mother's here today.
Nice to meet you. And Tareem, tell us, well, I think I unveiled a little bit of the future plans, but in your own words.
Yeah, I hope to pursue a major in electrical engineering and maybe one day open a bakery.
Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you so much, Tareem.
All right, well, congratulations, Tareem. Congratulations again. And congratulations on our 207's best this month. We invite you to go into the hallway, take some pictures with your principals, be with your families, your counselors that are here. You are more than welcome to come back to our meeting and bring us for the rest of this beautiful September evening, but I understand if you have other plans. So thank you so much. Good to see everybody.
Congratulations.
All right, so we will move to updates from our superintendent.
No updates at the moment.
All right, thank you. Any updates from our board members? Other than happy September, everybody. It's hard to believe we're here, but we are. All right, with no updates, let's go ahead and move to our finance committee update. And Kelly?
Thank you. So we met on August 18th. There was no public comments. Okay, Ms. Kalu ran through the changes to the tentative budget. There were some added expenses at the end, which made the surplus go down slightly from 14.23 million to 14, almost even 14,24,594. The final budget will be an action item for today and needs to be filed with the state by September 30th. Comments were it was a very positive year, but I think that was a hefty surplus, I believe, was the...
Okay.
Then travel expenses were approved. This is pretty standard. The annual travel amounts are to be approved at today's meeting. The travel is in accordance with Policy 2135. It's budgeted for this year at 15,000 for the board and a max for the district at 425,000. And then our graduation contract was secured. Lucky we were to get it because apparently the Rosemont Theater is sold. However, our contract is binding if it does sell. The contract price is up 5% from last year, but the total is $70,350. District families have been happy with the venue and their experience. Congrats about all.
Thank you so much. Let's move to our Buildings and Grounds Committee update. Cameron.
We met on August 18th, 2025. We called the meeting to order at 4:46. There were no public comments. The district has been approached by several solar companies, all looking for a long-term contract. The district issued a request for proposal for solar consulting services on June 10th. We received three responses and interviewed two companies. The administration recommends Jones Lang LaSalle, JLL, for a discovery and feasibility contract in the amount of $54,450. And the results will be presented to the board with a proposal to either move forward or table the project for future. During the summer, a tuck pointing project at the Maine South Spect Gym and Field House, it was discovered that many bricks were in need of replacement exceeding the contract allowance. The change order with IW&amp;G Inc. adds $46,638, increasing the total contract to 516,778. Next year, we will build in a larger allowance in the event of the continued tuck pointing and has similar findings. The district recommends Wright and Company to develop a master plan for the existing athletic fields at each high school, which was not covered in the referendum work. Wright will meet the district leadership to discuss goals and maximize green space. Up to three concepts for each school will be presented for team review, and the projects will follow a similar schedule as the referendum. The scope of services totals $47,000, and we adjourned at 5:27 p.m.
Thank you very much.
Just making one note about those minutes that says meant for Collins during the building grounds.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for our committee updates. We will circle back on the strategic plan update with Brett Clark. But so for now, let's go ahead and open it up for public comments. So just a little overview of public comments. Each comment does get three minutes. This is your opportunity as the community to address the board. We will not be answering any questions at this time, but we do have your email address, so if a response is needed, you will be contacted by the appropriate administrator. And so with that, why don't we go ahead and start with Erin Stojakovic?
Close enough.
Close enough, okay.
Do you want me to stay here?
You can come to the podium. Please do state your name, address, and your topic and...
Sure. My name's Erin Stojakovic. I am president of Maine South Baseball Boosters, newly formed in 2024. My address is 411 South Bryant and Park Ridge. I'm here tonight. We've been communicating with several members of the board and of the administration. Very grateful for the responses we've received. We did see that the exterior facilities plan was on the agenda tonight, so we just thought we'd make ourselves visible in our request that baseball has a seat at the table for the exteriors renovation. There are many people who would, within our program, who would be adept in helping just to implement changes that might be needed for our scope of the project. In short, you know, for the short term, I know that this is more of a long exterior renovation, we do need help with fields and facilities from a safety perspective, which we communicated and are working with Matt Ryder. He's going to work with our coach, but just kind of really want to make sure that we're very transparent in the needs that are immediate in short term as well as the long term and that we would like to partner with Maine South and 207 to help make some of those facility improvements properly communicated and become a reality through students at Maine South.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So with no further public comment, if we could just circle back to our strategic plan update with Brett Clark.
Yep, I apologize. So thank you for some time tonight. I just wanted to update the board. We're going to try and update you each month with where we're at with strategic planning. So one of the big things right now is that the survey is out. We have emailed that to staff. The community newsletter is at the post office right now, so that'll be delivered soon where there's QR code and a, also a web address for folks to be able to do that survey. We've emailed that to parents, and there'll be a student email going out soon as well. And we'll continue to remind folks about completing that survey. It takes about five or 10 minutes. The other big piece that we've been working on is setting up focus groups. We have board members doing one-on-ones with our consultants. We also have set up 35 focus groups. That includes the area superintendents, incoming parents, parents, teachers, support staff, students, administrators, community members, superintendent advisory council, and cabinet. And so between the surveys and the focus groups information, all of that's going to be summarized, and then it'll be shared with the planning team as they start to work on developing a draft strategic plan for the board to consider. So that's sort of where we're at at this point. I wouldn't entertain any questions if anyone has. Can you just remind us real quick of the timeline for the strategic planning process in general or... Yeah, in general. Yeah. We hope to be able to have a draft plan to the board hopefully in March for that consideration, where we would get approval then at that point, and then start to work on the implementation process. So throughout the fall and part of the winter, it would be those, we would do all of these focus groups here in September and the surveys, then we'd start meeting with that team. That would happen, I believe we have meetings set for October, November, December, and January, if I remember correctly. In between the December and the January meeting, we're going to push the draft plan out and get feedback so that then the team can look at that and make adjustments if they need to.
Any other questions? All right, if none, thank you so much, Brett. All right, if we can move to the monthly status of finances of Mary.
In your board packet is July financial statements. If you look at the revenue side, you'll see close to zero revenue has been collected in March, July. That is largely due to property tax collections. If you heard anything in the news, it's that Cook County has not sent out tax bills. Cook County has no idea when tax bills will actually be sent out. It's the first time, I think, that they have no projected date for when they're going to be. I think this is kind of, unfortunately, something that happens more often than not in Cook County, which is why we have a fund balance policy that allows us to provide the cash flow until Cook County can figure out when our property tax... until Cook County can figure out when our property taxes are going to come in. When they do come in, we should see a hundred percent of the revenue that we have budgeted. It's just going to be a timing issue. On the expenditure side, you can see, the only variances are, are in those funds, which traditionally have summer projects, health life safety, operation and maintenance, capital projects. All of those are within budget, but a large portion of that budget is expended during the summer. And because it crosses the June-July both fiscal years, it depends on when the billing, how much work they can do in one fiscal year versus the other. I will entertain any questions that anybody has on the July financial statements.
Because last year was a long time ago, can you tell me why 2024, we saw so much revenue early on?
Yeah, it was because tax bills were actually assigned last year. So, and with an August 1st due date, there is a, a number of taxpayers that pay it in July. As long, and the turnaround time is such that we'll get it fairly quickly after it's been paid. So, you'll, my guess is, without a projected date, it could be as late as December. So, you're going to start to see that variance between 24 and 25, all the way until that tax bill is, is distributed and then collected, because about eighty percent of our revenue is property taxes.
Thank you. I have a quick question. There's a capital program that's on the expenses, what is just being this?
Sure.
What is that?
That is, that was, in the Capital Projects Fund for the summer of 2025, was the first phase of our security improvements, which were the exterior door alarming and additional T-bobs on those doors. It's part of a multi-year project. A lot of they, they were actually running, had a schedule, so there's a lot of that project that was billed and paid in July.
Thank you. No further questions. We'll move to instructional services. Sean?
So, we don't have any updates this month in general, but we do have new course proposals for first reading. Two courses we are proposing are college algebra and business calculus. They are both senior year courses, so capstone courses, depending upon students, which way they're headed, whether they're headed towards business, whether they're headed towards humanities major. But both represent full credit courses with open. So, successful completion results in free credits with opening.
Great, and then textbooks?
Textbooks. So, if you move to textbooks, this is one, one classic, I guess we would say, 1936. How to Win Friends and Influence People. Actually, it's in our special education department. And for some of our programming, that sort of social interaction, and it has some actual, some nuggets that are worthwhile exploring, continue to help students learn how to negotiate in, not just the business world, but in a circle setting. So, nothing surprising in that book. But we, it is not one that's on our approval list.
Sean, and I, when I was reading this, I, I was trying to find a way, not to sound like a smart aleck when I ask this question, but has the text changed at all, or is it the original? I mean, has it evolved at all?
It, it has been updated. This would be the most updated version. Yes, there are some things that still pertain to the lingo of 1936, particularly some of the, the titles of the chapters which haven't changed. But they have updated statistics and things of that nature related to the recommendations.
And it's being used as a supplemental resource, not as a reading the book cover to cover?
I mean, it must be a valuable resource if it's been around that long.
Thank you.
I did have to look up crime and punishment too the other day, so that might be cutting your work. It's always new again.
Yes. Alright, well, thank you so much. Let's go to an update on FOIA requests.
Sure. Since our meeting in August, we've received seven requests for FOIA requests, and the district has either responded or is in the process of replying to the, in compliance with the statute. Thank you.
Alright, we are now moving to the consent agenda. Just so everybody knows, all items in the consent agenda can be found in our printed agenda for this evening. I am going to ask for a motion on items 7A through F, please. Can I get a second? Thank you. Jenny, if you could take the role.
Iker?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, everyone. Can I get a motion on the second reading for our Board of Education policies?
Second.
Thank you. George?
No additional information on no changes since the first reading.
Okay. Alright, any questions? Yes, no? Jenny, if you could take the role.
Jaime?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Alright, can I get a motion on approval of textbooks? This is a second reading. Okay, thank you.
So, this is a second reading for the book Nickel Boys, which is part of our new AP seminar course, which we have for the first time this year. Language Arts Four, Punching the Air, and the last one, multi, our multilingual program, the coming three-year planning board for rapture tonight.
Thank you. Alright, can you take the role, Jenny?
Hartwig?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Alright, can I get a motion for the approval of District 207 budget for 2025, 2026?
Second.
Thank you.
That's a discussion on the budget and spent on public disclosure since July 1st, with a tentative budget presentation in July. This is the final budget for approval this evening. It will be then sent to the Illinois State Board of Education by the end of the month in compliance with the law.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? With none, can you take the role?
Forsterling?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Alright, so we're going to move to the approval of bids and awarding of contracts. I'm going to take these individually. Can I get a motion on House of Light? This is vision and O and M services. Send you.
Okay, so the past two years, we have contracted with House of Light for vision and orientation and mobility services, which are required through the IEP for students that, students with a visually impaired. And we do post this each year, looking for a teacher who is certified, as well as a student who, or a teacher who has their COM certification. That's someone who's able to do the orientation and mobility for a student who has a visual impairment. We have been unable to fill that, and so, this is a very difficult position to fill. It is highly specialized. And so, since we were unable to find any qualified candidates for that, we are asking the board to let us continue the agreement that we've had with House of Light. We've had very good services. They serve our students well. And so, I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you. With no questions, we can take the role.
Jaime?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Alright, can I get a motion on the intergovernmental agreement with Niles Township District for special education?
Second.
Thank you.
So, we have also had an IGA with NTDSC for the, I mean, for several years. They are one of the public day schools that does provide services for students with complex needs that we are unable to educate within our home school buildings. And most of the students that are there do also have assistance of an individual aid. And this has also been included in our proposed budget for our public day schools. Again, services have been very solid throughout the years, and they have collaborated well with us to support our students and meet their individual needs. So, the services have been determined necessary through a student's IEP. And the funding then just, again, we're just asking that the board approve it. It is up a little bit from last year because we do have one additional student there, a ninth grader that moved in that was already placed at NTDSC. And so, to not disrupt that transition, and because we could not serve the student within one of our home schools, they will continue at NTDSC.
Thank you. Any questions? Alright, with none, I'll take the role.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Can I get a motion on Jones Lang LaSalle Americas? This is solar, a solar consultant. Thank you.
This portion of the contract would cover the discovery and feasibility components of the RFP, because it's, once we have the information on feasibility, we'll make a decision whether to move on to the procurement stage if the financial situation makes sense. We have chosen to go this route to provide an independent review and overview of solar to, to get a better and more realistic payback on, on what a project would cost us or save us.
So, does the district have a goal in terms of how much power they want to generate? Or is that something that we would get an idea of what's feasible?
So, that's when the feasibility comes through, because we would, we would want to offset as much of our electrical usage capacity as possible. We could even, there in a scenario, create excess power and then sell it back for credits. I think where it makes sense is why you have to do a feasibility study is, what does it look like in kind of with our ropes? So, you'd want to do it on ropes that are not up for immediate replacement, because then, think about it again, install all the solar panels on a rope, have to take them all off that rope, replace the rope and reinstall them. So, I think that's why we're looking at, you know, I, I think some of the other reports that we could offset thirty, thirty-five percent, we would want to offset as much as we can while still producing savings.
Thank you.
Iker?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Alright, can I get a motion on IW and G Incorporated tuck pointing change order? This is an increase. Thank you.
As indicated and discussed at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, we had an allowance for bricks that were found in need of replacement during the tuck pointing process. We found additional bricks beyond that allowance, and this change order covers that. In the bid, we did bid a per-unit brick replacement cost, so that, we did that. So, in the event, we ended up in this scenario. We knew how much per unit it was going to cost us versus the contractor being able to charge whatever, never they decided to charge per unit. So, that is the way we did due diligence in terms of making sure that this change order was in line.
Jenny?
Hartwig?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Can I get a motion on the White and Company exterior facilities plan scope of services?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, as indicated, this would do a comprehensive review and analysis of our exterior athletic facilities. We would start with White and Company interviewing all of the stakeholders, going through the existing purposes, come up with, up to three scenarios per school in terms of what this would, this, this process will follow what I would say our staff is most used to in terms of like what we did for the referendum, where all of the stakeholder information is gathered, then a potential project draft is developed, and then we get feedback from a broader spectrum of community, board, and everyone on that plan.
Thank you. Any questions? Alright, with none, we'll take the role.
Forsterling? Jaime?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Great, can I get a motion on the Rosemont Theater graduation contract?
This contract is identical to our previous year's contract. We were able to get the recording provision of the contract stricken, as well as they charged for parking stricken. It represents a five percent increase over what we paid for commencement for 2025, largely due to the cost of their labor increases.
Do we see an increase every year?
Um, some years, we haven't seen an increase. This is probably one of, I mean, I think they held us constant for about a three-year period.
Yeah, I think you're right, yeah. Great, any other questions? Okay, if none, we'll take the role.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Alright, can I get a motion on Empower Ed Education Consulting? Second. Thank you.
Empower Ed is the company that we use last year to complete our special education program review. We have partnered with them for the past two years to also provide professional development to our co-teachers and our inclusion facilitators. We'd like to continue that partnership this year. And one of the things that we will be focusing on is training some of our LBS ones to actually be the ones to take over the training for our co-teachers. Instead of continuing to consult with Empower Ed and have them provide the PD, they are going to help train our staff to be able to do that moving forward, because it's a more sustainable system. Additionally, they will be providing some onsite co-teaching training this year, as well as some coaching hours to help with moving some of our plan forward from the program review that we did. This will all be funded through the Individuals with Disabilities Education Grant.
So, I'm looking at, so any questions, if there are any? Is the funding, is that related to the not exceeding a certain amount, just based on the funding? I don't, I don't know if I remember that. I, maybe I'm, no, okay.
I think it's just, yeah, it was just written that way. So, yeah, it, it doesn't have to do with that.
Okay, got it.
We would have to amend the grant if there would be any change in the amount anyway.
Sounds good.
So, we'd have to then remember.
Great, thank you. No other questions, we'll take the role.
Jaime?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Alright, can I get a motion on subject.com? This is the Student Credit Recovery Program.
Second.
Thank you.
So, subject.com is actually going to replace a product we had called Edmentum. And so, the cost is roughly the same. It's actually a little bit cheaper, but it is a more robust platform. And this is used primarily by students who are credit deficient. And so, each of our buildings last year piloted something we refer to as Student Success Academy, where students have a specialized schedule that helps them make up their credits and stay on target for graduation. And this is the online program they use to help facilitate that.
Is this something they do on their own time, or is this within school?
You can do it on your own time. However, what we find to be more successful is that the students come to school and work through that platform with the support usually of a teaching assistant here on campus. Just leaving that to, you know, after school hours can be very difficult just from the standpoint of students having other things that they are responsible for.
And are most students that be able to graduate on time with the help of this program?
We actually had a pretty successful rate with that last year of the students who, it was a small number of students who we did put through the program, and seventy-five percent of them were successful in making up the credits that they needed to.
Great, thank you. No further questions, we'll take the role.
Iker?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Jaime?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Alright, can I get a motion to move into closed session for discussion of student personnel, review of closed session minutes, appointment employment compensation, discipline performance, or dismissal of specific employees, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiating matters, and other permitted topics under the Open Meetings Act? Second, thank you. Thank you.
Jaime?
Aye.
Hartwig?
Aye.
Forsterling?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Alright, we are now in closed session.